All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the School Acton School Committee meeting, January 12, 2023, first one of the new year, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
There are none.
No, okay. Any comments from the public tonight? That's like God to tell the truth, you know, they they figure like that, yeah, okay. All right, then I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second. Moved by Mary, seconded by CJ to accept the consent agenda. A discussion, all in favor? Okay. Chair reports, and we'll hear from the superintendent.
Sure, I just have a few bulleted items. One is everybody seemed to have enjoyed their winter holiday break. Kids and staff came back with smiles on their faces and were right back into it. You'll notice that there was no celebration of learning tonight. I did have one lined up with the people that I asked, they had some childcare things tonight, so I removed it. But in the next couple of regular school committee meetings, there won't, there may not be celebration of learning, there definitely will not be progress monitoring because both are February and March meetings dovetail with budget meetings right after. So historically, we've always tried to keep the school committee meetings just to business so that we could use that last part for budget because that could go, that can go kind of late. So tonight, we will have progress monitoring with Patty, but you won't hear from her again unless if there's a need to until April, okay? And I might sneak a celebration of learning in because the people that I asked really want to do it, and I said, can you wait until April? They're like, how about next month? So we'll see how that works, okay? And then I got another one, and it's Paula, there was something that you and I discussed that maybe you might want to ask the committee what the thinking is on?
When I email the school committee packets to you, I usually have 10 or more attachments to it. I didn't know if you would find it easier if I put it all in one document so it's all together in order of the agenda instead of separate.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine with me, yeah.
Is that how you sent it?
No, I sent it with.
I know, I saw that, I said, that's different, but that's okay.
Jim told me you liked it all separate, so I said, well, that's good. It would be easier all together.
If it's one attachment, they'll all be, they'll all be identified by their department anyway, right?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
That'll be fine, yeah.
I'm curious, as a follow-up to that, what's your feelings on moving to just electronic communications on the agenda, not having packets when you show up?
I think it's helpful to have something in front of my face, myself. Even though I've read this stuff before I come, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Yeah, I want it.
I mean, I could print it out myself.
I printed it out myself.
What does everybody think? You like the packets?
Yes.
If you're going to print them out anyway, we can do it for you. I was just wondering how, we had just a secondary conversation on how close did we want to go to making this as paperless, but this process as possible.
But you can do them back to back and save on paper.
There you go.
Well, I know, but I got to use paper and my ink.
No, I'm talking to Paula.
Well, oh, okay. That's why I don't do it. I read it, and then I'm looking for the packet.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's what I have?
That's what you have.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, does anyone have any questions or comments for any of the administrative reports this month? I expect, maybe you'll tell us a little more about the lights in your, are you going to say anything?
LRP.
In the, in the long range planning, are the lights going to come into that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we'll leave that then, yeah. All right, then. There are no questions or comments on?
Well, I did have one question. With whatever the storm repairs, was that anything to do with insurance, like get reimbursed?
No, just wires were pulled down because of the heavy, heavy snow and rain, so I decided to rerun some wires, and the camera went out, so I had to replace the camera. It was minor stuff. I was a full time remasters.
So you were our insurance on those, huh?
No, it's not, it's not worth the investment.
Right.
He has a high deductible.
Right. Okay, then let's move on. Anybody else have anything for reports? Then let's move on to the progress monitoring with iReady Math and Reading Diagnostics with Patty.
I kept it for you. But I wanted to show you what things look like now that we have done diagnostic number two. I'm hoping that's the right number, I don't have my eyes on. So we also had another meeting, the final meeting for this year with the consultant from iReady, and we spent some time looking at how to look at the data that we have now from the diagnostic. What you're seeing right now is where we stand with their, the progress of our students who took the diagnostic. The goal is to get them up on this end, from like 50 to 100% growth math. Right now, we have a chunk down here. So all the teachers have seen this, and everybody knows where their class is, and so the goal is to now see this drop and the numbers to build up on, up on this end. So then I broke it down because I like this visual. So in the fall, our triangle looked like it does on the, on the left with 29% of our kids at risk for tier three interventions, which is the highest level of intervention, 54% at tier two and 17% at tier one. The goal is to make sure our at-risk kids, our numbers drop. So in the winter, when we took the winter test, we are now at 21% at risk, 48% of them are in tier two, and our tier one, which is where we want them, grew significantly. So I was really happy to see that. And then we, I'll be able to look at them again after we take the spring diagnostic to see just how much it changes from there. So our reading, even though we're just piloting the program, I wanted to look at it to see, to see what was going to happen between fall and spring because we've not done this program. And we went from 20 to 14% at risk for tier three, 52% to 33% at tier two, and our tier one went from 28% to 54%, which is really a huge jump. So the teachers who are using the iReady reading are super happy with it, they love the fact that it's set up the way the iReady Math is, it's easy for them to make the jump from one to the other. So it's not like they're relearning a whole new program. And when the consultant came, he said there are two areas of, areas of math focus, and being the math geek that I've turned into, I wanted to show you this because I really loved the way this was broken down. So we went from fall, winter, and numbers in operation, which is huge. Our most at-risk went from 32% to 18%. And then the other area of focus for math is algebra and algebraic thinking, and we went from 28.7%, most at-risk, down to 13%. So for a math program that we've only been really implementing for a solid two and a half, almost a half year, two and a half years now, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited to see these numbers. So that is all, I told you I would keep it short. But it will be, it will be nice also to see what happens in the springtime. So, and we are in an NWEA window right now, so because we're going into the budget and we're not going to do things like this, I will make sure in your packets that you have information from me about where we are in the NWEA, so.
That'll be good.
Any questions or anything for Patty?
Good to see improvement.
Yes. And in a fairly short amount, short amount of time.
It was, it was just from September to September.
Just from September till now. So, yeah, just to see how, how we're looking the next, you know, in the spring, how things are going.
Exactly.
I haven't seen that, I like the triangle presentations. So it was in the spring, we got three of them, is that the idea goes, or just winter to spring, but you can show all three?
I can show all.
Awesome, thank you, Patty.
All right. Okay, let's move on then to committee reports. Policy committee?
We did not meet this month.
Okay. Long-range planning.
Yep, we just met. We've got a couple of kitchen items that we talked with Holly Hartley about. Do you want me to list them out separately, what the three are?
Sure. She, she created, but you're going to also just kind of put them in order of priority too.
Okay, yeah, so first priority was definitely the kitchen cooler that needs to be fixed. And then they talked about the ovens having, I guess we have one electric and one gas now, and we're looking at getting them both to be gas, and the kitchen dishwasher is just on the watch list. And then roof upgrades is our next big thing, which Andy says will be a multi-year process doing in portions.
Yep.
Yeah, and then you have the LED lighting update?
Yep, basically, the LED lights are, the installation's complete. The contractor's got a couple of areas to come back and finish, just some recessed lights in the entryways and some in the basement. But very pleased with how the project went. The guys worked some during the day when school was in session in areas that they could access, they worked nights, and they finished the project over Christmas break. The staff, the staff, I've received positive feedback from the staff as far as the crew when they were in here working, and relied on feedback from the staff as to adjust the lighting in different areas. Some of it's still going to be dialed in, but overall, just very pleased with how the project went, and now we're looking forward to realizing the savings in energy costs, so.
Those guys were top-notch, and Andy did a great job scheduling and staying on top of it. We're a little over a month ahead of schedule, which is great because to meet our deadline for the rebate, we needed to get it done before February 17, I think was the day. We're well ahead of that, and he did a great, he was a great project manager on that.
Do we have efficiency main? I didn't, I don't remember that.
This is through efficiency.
Okay, all right, because people got light bills, and they were not $60, $70 with efficiency main, and they called and they said, what you want is standard. But I, when I opened my bill the other day, I looked and it said, standard is supposed to go up 17%. So I don't know what these people were told, that standard was better than to use efficiency main.
Right, you're talking about provider.
The bill.
The provider, yeah, right, right.
Do you know, Paula?
Anybody get a?
Have you noticed if we have standard or if we have something else, or where on that, where on that, where on that?
The original one was efficiency main.
Yeah, but I think we're on that solar one now, aren't we?
No, they haven't hooked it up yet.
We haven't started yet?
Not yet.
The solar credits, what we purchased, that's a way to pay the bill. That's separate from the provider.
Right, but I don't know, I can't, I'm trying to figure out which is better now, efficiency main or standard.
Believe me, I have the same problem, I don't know.
I don't know, if you called and tell them you have efficiency main, they say standard is better. But if you read the brochure that came with the light bill, it says standard is going to go up 17%. So I don't know, I'm going to keep the note and see what happens. My light bill went down $2.
You probably shut a light on, aren't you special?
You should have had your radio off a little more.
Shut down the power lights.
Oh, the power! I need a power. We had no power. Few days.
Or two weekends.
That's a saving, huh?
No, 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 but the bill had come, no, the power outage had nothing to do with it at the time.
Clever.
But we're very fortunate that the stars aligned the way that they did because we were able to take advantage of the incentive that efficiency main offered when it came along, and we had support from the town in order to execute the project, so, yeah.
Now, these LED lights outside, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't understand, I thought that those lights went off when the bright sunlight was out on them. They're on all the time when the sunlight's there.
We've got to move the, the.
Photocell.
The photocell.
Right, because I can, why, why are they on? Aren't they supposed to shut off?
Photocell is actually where it's located, it's not in a good spot, it's kind of in, it's in a shaded area, that's why they stay on later.
Right.
But it's not true in the summer when the sun's higher.
So is there one photocell for all of the outside lights?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I noticed those are, and I said, geez, I thought they were supposed to go off when the bright sunlight came on, so it's got to do with where the photo thing is.
Correct, yes.
Andy, I'm curious, I assume, and Jen's sitting right there, you talked with her about the lighting in this, this room?
Yes.
And this is what you agreed on?
Yes.
What is this level? Because there's like nine different combinations, and it's interesting because if you go in the gym, you'll get tan, it's bright. It's totally different than this room.
I give a huge, huge shout out to Andy because I came in here and thought, oh, no.
Right.
I absolutely can't do this. And Andy was on it, like he said, when is your first break? And he was on it immediately, and I, he actually changed it twice for me because I, the second, when I first said, yeah, that's great, and then he did all of them, I knew.
They're easy, they're easy to adjust, and we started like in the middle, and Jen was the first one who reached out to me, and we just experimented a little bit. We, we started, so, we started with in the middle, then we went for like a natural light, and this is what they call a warm light.
Yeah.
So once we had this room set this way, other people checked it out, and I just went, you know, I did like five or six classrooms all like this.
Based on this? Checking out the library?
That's what I'm telling them, I go, just tell them to do it like the library. And they go, what setting? I go, I don't know, nine of them, you kidding me?
But they're, they're super easy to adjust.
The bright is bright, though, like.
The hallway is the bright, right?
Wow, what is the hallway in the gym set at?
The hallway is very bright.
That's medium?
When they were installed, they were all set in the middle.
Did anybody go up and say, no, I want it brighter?
No.
Okay, I was just wondering, is that gym, that gym will get brighter than it is?
Yes.
Wow, wow, okay.
I have to say, though, the brightness in the hallway is great. Like, you can, you can tell the difference from the old lights, for sure.
Yeah. Great investment, bright savings.
When's the check coming?
It's funny we talked about. That was my question, who knows?
You have to look into it.
I think we may have to breach our deadline before we can have a conversation about that, is my guess, but Paula's first rodeo here with efficiency main, so that's, that's a question I asked, and we don't know, but we know we met the deadline.
Yep.
Then the question is, can we even talk about a check until before the deadline? They might say, no, we've got to wait until the deadline. You got it? Okay, I don't, I don't know that.
I don't either, but when it's done, it's done. I want my money.
Okay.
All right. No other committee reports? Is that it for long range?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. New business.
Okay, because I'm doing the next, I'm doing 7-2 on the overhead because it's got a lot to it. I'm just going to hand this printout, and I gave these two gentlemen the audience, and I'm going to have extra for everybody. I do, I'm not sure I'm going to read every line, but I want you to get the spirit of where we're heading for evacuations because it's way different. You guys want a copy of this? You have it, like I've given it to you, we have to update, but certainly, you good? Okay.
No, I'm good.
You guys don't see it, no, I'll leave a couple out?
No, good, no.
Okay, I just, I know Ray and Dennis hadn't probably seen this, and the school committee may have seen pieces of this.
Yeah, this is pretty much what you talked about last month, correct?
Right, but it's, but it's detailed now. Last month, it was only really the first half. I just want to go over, and we're going to, we have to wait for the weather to work probably, before we get too far into this. Patty and I looked at an ERD schedule out through March, and some of you attended Joe Jordan's Alice training with us. So Joe's a Sanford police officer who's also an Alice instructor, so we did the intro to Alice, and then he spent maybe 20 minutes, because we got talking in Lindsay Crawford's room after he was here, and he showed Lindsay a bunch of different things that could happen in her room to make it safer, because Lindsay has the door that opens out. So since then, we've come up with some mechanical ways of making sure those doors don't open, and as soon as some of the things that we've ordered come in, we'll be able to wrench those doors so you won't be able to open them very quickly. We learned that from Joe. So what we did is we scheduled Joe for some Wednesdays after the first Wednesday in February into March to hopefully sign up, I'll have to put together some sort of a sign up where teachers, anybody who has a classroom can get 10 minutes of Joe time, just sign up, he'll come in, he'll do a quick audit of your room, because we saw the benefit of working with kindergarten. Teachers can choose or not to do that, and Joe's made himself available. And then we have that PD day in March where we don't have kids and Sanford does. Remember back on the Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend? Sanford takes a day for PD and we don't, we have kids here, and we did, we've done this for a couple of years. So we have a PD day in March, I think it's March 17. I'm going to bring Joe in, he'll be able to join us probably mid-morning, maybe closer to lunch. We'll have some regular PD that Patty and I will talk about, and then we'll bring Joe in, and I think we'll practice some of the skills that we learned that some of you went to the training and try that out working with Joe to see how that works. That is safety when there's an imminent danger to staff and students in the building, and that could be a number of things, okay? This plan is not that. This plan is based on an environmental hazard. So let's just, let's just go with trailer truck just crossed the bridge and rolled over, and there's stuff, green goo's going into the river, and Wayne Ham says, John, you're going to have to evacuate the building, you can't have kids in here, you can't have staff in here, and I'll give you 45 minutes or whatever. That's when everything's perfect, right? Thanks, 45 minutes to get out of here, that'd be great. But if it's, it's not planned, but it's not a fire, it's not, I got to get out now. If it was a fire, we would also do the same thing, but we would be probably coming over to the Wayne's house in several different ways than we currently practice, so.
Sorry, which one is the Wayne's house?
So.
Straight across the street?
Yeah, that's, that's the first under evacuation. So if you go to where Andy's building is, and you come out the driveway from where he is so that his building's on the right, you'll go right into their driveway. They're right across from the bus parking. I've worked with the Waynes, went over, they're super open to us being there, looked at their house, looked at their, got a sense of their basement, looked at their garage, looked at the great room above the garage. There's more, there's more square footage than what we need when we bring kids into assembly. Not every adult is in assembly, a lot of the ed techs aren't there, they go home, they're punched out by then, but I'm convinced we can shelter in place for as long as we need. Everybody in this building over there with those three places, if we needed to be inside. And we've also agreed that I've put together an insurance rider, that if we ever had to go into their house and somebody did any damage to their house whatsoever, that's what our insurance rider is for, that we are responsible for that, because they're taking a risk by being a good neighbor. Now, most of the year, it's fairly dry and warm, we would be using their backyard, but on days like today, we would have to find some shelter. Now, if you follow through this evacuation plan, this is in best case scenario how it would go down. We thought through bus drivers, and we'd had a lot of discussions, that the bus drivers aren't going to just get here and get the buses going, parents will be here before them. So I'm probably going to be the only bus driver available, and I'll move as many students as I can to the public safety building by simply putting the bus in front of the Waynes and having kids come in and go, my guess would be, depending on what's going on, the youngest first and get them up there, or the ones that need the most to get up there. As that's happening, on any given day, there's, there's up to three vans out by Andy's building, depends on the time of day. There's usually one, but on, depending on if we're transporting kids in the morning and afternoon, there might only be one. But if this happens when we're not transporting kids, we might have three vans. So I've talked to all the people that are listed, it's, it's become a public document, they're all good, and we're going to be doing some training. It sounds funny, like training for a van, really? You'd be surprised. When we first used the van, we didn't know how to open up the side door, you had to go to the owner's van, it was tricky, it's just, it's not as intuitive, it's a fairly new van, so Christie, Judy, and Sherry will be, if we have three vans, if not, we'll be number one and number two, that'll, and you can move six kids, well, actually seven, you can put one in the front seat. So they can just start the loop, start dropping kids off, and that's what we're doing, getting off to the public safety. The backup driver, in case if anybody of the top three is out for some reason, has been recognized as Amy, and again, they'll take as many as we can up to the public safety building. We have what we call a mini white bus that we were using, we don't use it as much, but we used to use it because it has a, it's handicap accessible for wheelchair, and we had that need, and that's a Class C driving, you don't need a Class B for that, and you don't need a bus driver's endorsement for that because there's no lights on it. So Michelle Levy is our primary and Tracy's our backup, and we're going to find some time, you know, before Feb break to get them into that, because that's just like a regular Chevy, drop it into drive and off you go, but it's wide, and if you haven't driven anything wide, it's worth driving that up to the PSB and back just to get a feel for it, but it's, it's a very simple vehicle to drive. And then we've recognized Carol, Amanda, and Mike, they go immediately up to the public safety building because they need to be there. Carol has a van, and if it's possible, she'll take six kids with her and exit through Sandra's end of the building by her room. Amanda and Mike can do the same if possible, that is if possible. So if we're going by Sandra's room and give me, give me five kids, and remember, they're with us, we're getting them there first, because the idea is to mitigate the number of people that are down here as soon as possible. If we got a van going, throw some kids in it, but we need to be smart and write down who we gave, because when we do attendance, we need to know that they're already there. So there's nuances we've got to work out. So this reduces the number. Paula's going to leave immediately with, with a student and a one-to-one to go up to the public safety building, because she's going to be leaving with financial information and everything she needs to set up shop at the town hall or whatever at home, but if the building isn't going to be open for a week or two because there's something going on, we need to operate from somewhere. So she's got like a to-go idea, what might even be like a box that goes with her, most, believe it or not, most is a laptop. You can get into some of the fireproof, you know, files later, great, but most of it's on the laptop. And then there's names of people who have kids here that will take their kids with them because they're here, and they obviously drove them here, they can drive them away from here, right? And then again, reduces the numbers. So duties for people, specialists stop traffic and create crosswalks to the Wayne's house, that's a little different than what we used to do. So they kind of create a situation where people can't run us over because we need to get next door. Patty becomes the site supervisor at the Waynes, because I'm in a bus. Sharon assists with pre-case students, classroom teachers remain with their students over here, trying to keep them calm and happy until we can get them on a bus and get them up to the PSB. Chief Wayne Ham becomes the incident commander, the way, the way Wayne Ham described it is, John, you're in charge of wherever the kids are. So if the kids aren't in the school and they're up at the fire department, you're in charge of that building with your kids, and then he takes over down here, because they, they set up, it's called an incident command center, and Wayne's the one that will run that. Andy and Jim stay down here to give him a hand with anything because they know the building best, for whatever's going on. And then I become the site supervisor up at the PSB after everybody has been, after I get everybody there. Mike will be in charge until I get there, because I'm going to be, again, I'll be the only bus driver, I'm sure. Sam might be able to get here with her bus if it worked out, depending on the time of day or whatever, and I've talked with her, and I'm like, if you could back up, and clearly our road blockers will let a bus through, because they know what they're doing. The other thing that we're going to do is, and we did this, we've already moved the keys so that they're clearly labeled in a place where we can get them before, they're always locked in the bus shed. I have a spare key to every one of the vans, and they were in my desk. Amanda knows they're there, I know they're there, but the person driving the van wouldn't, so now we have them clearly labeled in a place that they'll know where they are. And then we, I talked about the training and the practice. Procurements, and we can just kind of skip over to the procurement piece, because I think I can tell you what we've done. Updates, so the school vehicle board's done, the site supervisor vest, this is important because Acton Fire Department's going to respond. Most of them know me, not all of them know me. Most of them might know Patty, maybe none of them know Patty. So somebody shows up over there to get some information and says, who's in charge? And you're going to try to find Patty in a crowd. She needs a bright orange vest that says "Site Supervisor," and all somebody has to go is go find the person with the site supervisor. It just makes things easier.
And maybe a step ladder.
I didn't go there with you, but she picked up one. The other one is, we need to set up at public safety, they get dropped off in the parking lot, go into the bay, if you know public safety at all, with the fire trucks out, because they're gone at that point. The kids will go in through there and be processed out, like there's a room behind there that's kind of like a day room, they call it, with an exit, has a door. So there will be the school nurse and Amanda as the attendance officer, and, you know, and Carol's there for any medical issues. What we really need to prevent is CJ showing up, seeing Theo get off the bus and go, I'm gonna grab my kid. It's like, gee CJ, I get it, he's safe, you can see him, but you gotta trust us, we gotta get him in the building. And then you come over to this door and we'll get him right to you, but I gotta know he went with you. I can't have you taking Theo, and we're not sure where he went, because at the end of the day, we're missing somebody. And that's where things get crazy. So we're really trying to figure out how to clamp down and make parent reunification as smooth as possible, because that's probably the point where things, if we can get out of the building, that's gonna be our next biggest challenge, is gonna be parent reunification. We're gonna create 250 info cards that are given to EMS at the road closure points. And the reason is, if, so if most of Act and Fire Department's down here, that means that Newfield and Chapley are gonna be up there helping us up at PSB. They don't know any of us. Sheriff's Department and State Police are gonna have to decide if they're gonna shut down 109. That's not my call. However, I can get roadblocks out at the, up by Jeanette's at the second Loop Road entrance so people can turn around, and over by Baker Lane and Sanborn, so you can turn around. Andy has the road, what do they call it, sawhorses or something? Barricades. His first job before helping out Wayne is to get those up. And then as these fire EMS come to help, Wayne's gonna be running things, there will be people that they staff at these barricades, because Mom and Dad's gonna run to the school. We know that, we had a trial balloon on this in Sanford. So we've talked to Joe, I've talked with a lot, as you know, I've been way more engrossed in law enforcement at this point here than I have been in the past. So I'm working with these people on boots-on-the-ground level, and we've looked at a lot of different angles. This may or may not work, and I'll let parents know when I share this through some formal communication. You're not gonna get to the school. However, you need to go to the public safety building, because that's where your child's gonna arrive. So the way EMS works, when they show up, it's very typical that somebody will be given road closure duty till the next person shows up, and they're like, hey Andy, take over road closure, I wanna go down there and see what's going on. Now Andy's the road closure. But nobody told Andy what to tell the parents when they show up, because he just showed up, and the communication is completely broken down. So if we get laminated cards that say, this road is closed, the school is currently being evacuated, and you will find your child at the public safety building, please go there now, please do not come to the school. And we attach them to the sawhorse in a Ziploc bag and have 250 on both, anybody can hand that card to a person or read it to them. Because communication is the number one thing when people are just, their anxiety, they're trying to get to their kid, and who knows, somebody might run a roadblock or go right around them, we can't control that. But we're trying to mitigate all those factors in a calm and supportive way, and that's one way of just doing it, is a simple message to everybody that's the same. We're gonna get radios and a charger for every room, we're looking at a funding mechanism now, Paul and I are working on that. The idea is, does anybody have radio on them? I shut mine off and put it away for tonight's meeting, but we all have, we have an FCC license and a purchase, so these are good from about here to Jeanette's house. I've actually gone as far as I can and tried, and it's about just beyond Jeanette's house I can pick up here, and I can't pick up anybody from your house down here, I've tried before. So they're not long-range, they're yard radios, yard radios so that you can work your area. Right now, Channel 1 is the radio that we use, and there's a lot of them in the building. They take them out to recess, so, you know, Pre-K has one, I think Special Ed has one, so they can listen to Patty and John and Andy talk all day long on Channel 1 if they choose to. What we're gonna do is get a radio for every learning space that's on Channel 2, not Channel 1. It won't even have a Channel 1, so you can't turn to Channel 1 and take it to recess where, because those will get legs, they'll disappear. So it won't be usable to talk to Amanda. But what'll happen is, there'll be an announcement that, you know, we're going into a lockdown, like this isn't a drill, turn on your radio. And then everybody in the building turns it on, and it's already in Dave Cody's classroom on Channel 2, he can turn it on every day he comes in, but he's not gonna hear a thing, because we're not transmitting on Channel 2, we're transmitting on Channel 1. But just like a tac line for the police, you go to your tactical line so Jeanette can't listen into what's going on. That's a protected channel. So Channel 2 becomes our protected channel, and all the teachers and all the staff, then I can say, hey Mark Noel, here's the deal, take all your kids at that end of the building and get out, go to the Waynes. Hey Heather, Pre-K, hunker down, they're coming, hang in there. And we can talk, because communication within the building, with cell phones and all these other things, didn't work. Joe mentioned this when we talked about safety, he said, ah, you know, I just did something, I think he said at a hospital, and, you know, they couldn't find the radios, and the batteries didn't work. I said, this is a dedicated radio that's plugged into a wall that's in the sleeve, that's always on Channel 2, never gets used for anything else. If that radio lights up, that means you got a problem. If people start talking, that means that something's going on. Hopefully, we'll never use Channel 2, we'll never use these radios. Having these radios, these yard radios around for emergencies, I think is a really good idea. And we've been talking to main radio about getting those. That could be as soon as this winter, and then just training the teachers and working with the staff about how valuable these are and what they're only used for. It's like a fire alarm, you don't just pull it because it's there, emergency radios, emergency.
Something they can take with them when they leave the building.
They would too, but it's also something to communicate in a building while we're in lockdown, because the new rule isn't you lock down and you shelter in place, the new rule might be, you lock down, you survey, and if it's okay to leave, you leave. Well, people need permission to leave, they can get permission to leave on their own, they're gonna look around and go, I'm outta here. And they can do that now. It'd be a lot better if we said, hey guys, here's the deal, hunker in place for a little bit longer, could be a threat that's in the main hallway, and I'm dealing with it, and it's not going well, and the police have been called, and I'm gonna go into lockdown, because I got somebody who wants to take my head home and my body in a different hand, they're just mad at me and they're coming to kill me or whatever. And here we go, and it's me and them, and we're in lockdown. Depending on how that goes, and the police are on their way, we might be in lockdown, but these people may not need to go anywhere. That could be over in 10 minutes. And it's freaky, and everybody's scared, and we gotta settle down, but we never even evacuated, because whoever this crazy person is just got arrested and want away. And hopefully, I'm still around to hope that happens. But that's a situation where we don't have to leave, it's a situation that could happen. The situation we saw in Sanford was a stay where you are, and they didn't know what was going on, because they didn't know what was going on. But if we're surveying and we're seeing nothing's happening at one end of the building or the other, the new rule is, hey, how about everybody from the middle school down, get out now? There's nothing going on over there. And we got eyes all over the place, so I think the radio will be very, very helpful in that case. You never know until you get into an emergency though, right? Rosters in the emergency red folders updated, we haven't even taken that on yet, we had a nice process in the red folder over on the wall. Prior to COVID, it's kind of getting a little dusty, and that's probably the next thing we need to get. The other one is go bags for each classrooms. If we're gonna be anywhere for any longer amount of time, just some basic stuff you should have for your classroom. Anything from toiletries to games for the little kids, just to keep them happy, and crayons and things, right? Little go bags that go with you when you leave your room with your radio. And then we've already taken care of the approved closure sawhorses. So that's it on paper, and we're gonna put some of this to practice soon. We're gonna have Joe in here in February at some point, doing the room safety piece. Again, there's no such thing as secret plans, Wayne Ham and I were talking about that, I just gave it to the world. I mean, everybody knows what we're gonna do if there's gonna be an evacuation. I think everybody needs to know what we're gonna do in an evacuation. It's important, you know, because, you know, you just think about where the world goes, and people say, oh, you give away the secrets, it doesn't really work like that, guys. You're gonna drill, you're gonna plan, you're gonna have something in place.
It probably would've been helpful if all the parents had known about this kind of thing before this incident.
One would say, would that help? Of course, we learned a ton, and as unfortunate it was to happen in Sanford, I had already had Joe scheduled here for the week after, I think he was in here, he was here the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And I don't know when that happened, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving is probably when this thing happened over in Sanford. I don't know what the dates are, but it was within a week at the time that I met with Joe. And they had learned so much that helped us do this, because they realized, these are things that didn't go well. So you learn from that. You know, but people are gonna come here, they're gonna do that. That's what happens. Any questions from anybody? Staffs heard this a hundred times.
This comment, you said there might be some confusion on a parent showing up at the public safety building, and, you know, they're trying to get their child out. You know those wet floor type of signs, A-frame type of situation? To put signage up, say, pick child over here, or a direction, because we're gonna have the cards on that already, where to go, but once they get there, okay, now where do I go?
So that's another thing, if you think of being a drone and looking down on that parking lot at the public safety building, actually, I think we kind of gave this towards Mike to figure out, a bus turns pretty well, you can do pretty good at turning. I know I can turn a bus around in that parking lot, they get fire trucks in and out there, there's a lot of pavement. The question is, where does the bus go, drop and turn and get out, and where do the parents go so that bus can go back and get another load? And that's where coning off and having a parent section and signage, just like you said, is super important. Because people are gonna be panicked enough, they're gonna get a card that goes to public safety, now they get there, now what? So it needs to be facilitated by people that are trained, and as much as maybe Newfield and Chapley wanna come and help, they don't know about any of this, they're just the backup system to come and help us. But we're gonna drill it too. We're gonna actually try to pull this off as a drill when it gets warm and dry, I don't wanna be in the Waynes' house for a drill. I wanna wait until the grass is dry and we can drill for this when we can, and the weather is just right. But, you know, you drill on perfect days, and it never happens on a perfect day, does it?
So was that all for 7-1?
That is all, unless there's any questions, I'm not hearing any. Get on my screen mirroring.
So now we're going on to 7-2?
Mike, you can draw up that, I'll give this from back here. So tonight, a couple of Warrant Finance members are here, this is not, this is not the night we're gonna actually look at, you know, individual articles and go over them line by line and see if they're up or down, but that is the plan, and I have all the dates laid out from, you know, our first meeting to a public vote. And so this is really just the overview. If I could, I'm gonna ask Andy to hand out this to everybody, because this slide, this slide's tough to see, maybe we'll start from this side, this is a hard one to see, and I'll take one too. That slide does not show up well when I project it. So technically, this is Paul and I's first chance to, excuse me, get together and look at some numbers, and that's considered the process where some adjustments are being made. We're looking at historical usage of different accounts, and, you know, what trends we've had over the years, what things we've done, initiatives and what those cost us. And then we build a budget book with the proposed next year. We meet with the school committee and Warrant Finance, and we literally go over every line of what creates that budget with you guys. That becomes the school committee's budget at that point. I could go in with X, and school committee could say, I want X plus 90%, or they could say, delete X. I'm just giving them our first draft. School committee then goes and creates what becomes the FY24 budget. The Warrant Finance does an advisory review, and there will be a night that's scheduled where Warrant Finance then sits where the school committee is and goes through each article and gives it a yea or a nay. And then the town budget and adjustments can be made, and it gets approved at the town level. Let me walk you through our dates and some ideas. Budget dates is hard to see. I've given them out to Warrant Finance, Dennis, you got them from me, I think you got them from Jennifer as well.
And I gave them all to the committee members.
Perfect. It's going out, though, I was gonna have a staff meeting yesterday, but this is about all I had, so I didn't bother and wanted the teachers to have their time, so it's going out, the weekly update to staff, school committee. You helped create these, I've been bouncing, we've been going back and forth on this each week for about a month. So there's really no, everybody in here except for Pat, the teachers are up to speed on these dates, just because I didn't bother doing it yesterday, and I didn't send it out in the weekly update. These are all open meetings to anybody, some are school committee nights and some are not. I mean, the first one is in a couple of weeks on a Thursday, and it's not a school committee night, so all we'll be doing is digging into a couple of articles on the 26th that night. There won't be a school committee, I think it'll be just a budget meeting. And you can see, it kind of culminates all the way out to, you know, Tuesday 5-2-23, Election Day at the town hall, polls are open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There was a discussion not long ago, I believe, over, there weren't a holiday break for us at the town as to whether it would be a town meeting or a secret ballot, and I got word that we're going with the secret ballot and that the selectmen had supported that, so that's the route we're going. I will say, and I think I've heard CJ echo this before, for our parents, which is, I mean, the whole town is the constituency of the school, but the parents are the ones that are the constituents who have kids in the school at this moment. I've heard that the 12 hours to be able to come and go at the town hall works better and more access than to come to a Saturday meeting, or however that might work out.
Absolutely.
So we're once again at the, however, there will be a public meeting at 6:00 PM in the gym on Thursday, the 4/6, which is April 6, prior to that vote. Again, those dates will go out. This is the one that you really can't see very well, so I handed it out. This is the year we're living in right now, so this is the budget that was passed last year. Just to give you an idea, and hasn't really, the pie hasn't changed that much over the years, you know, 56% of our overall budget is in salaries and benefits. Transportation is a fairly good-sized piece of the pie at 8%, and that's inclusive of Special Ed transportation. Our tuition at 23% is our high school tuition, and any student who is at a special needs school where we can't meet their needs here and we have to go to eight different schools, called an out-of-district placement, 23%. Contracted services, which are everything from speech to PT, those kinds of things that we contract out are 4%. Then you can get into things like books and supplies at 2, tech and software at 1, and then repairs, utilities, and maintenance, is really only 5%, which you'd think it would be more, because we didn't mention it at LRP, but we've done $300,000 to $400,000 worth of upgrades to this building on federal money. So that's something that I think we fail to celebrate every now and then. It's like the statistic that doesn't get counted, the person who sped and didn't get the ticket, it's like, yeah, there's a lot that's in this building that was never put to the taxpayer because we had federal grants to take care of it, therefore, they're never gonna be on the LRP list of things to do. And I think that's super helpful, because this is a really good building. And then food supplies and kitchen is at 1%. If we were to compare this to last year's pie, you really wouldn't see much, and to be honest with you, moving into FY24, I don't see that the percentages are really gonna change that much either. I mean, they're all gonna fit within a percent or two, would be my guess, as we move forward of where they are right now. Some goals, some things to be thinking of. You're always gonna see continue to refine our PBIS processes, we're just getting back on our feet, we're not quite where we probably should be right now coming out of this COVID thing, but we were really rocking and rolling with PBIS there for a while, and we gotta get back to that. And you're gonna see that as a goal, as long as I'm here, you're always gonna see that as a goal, because it works. Review and improve literacy programming, I'll break that down for you in a moment. Implement I-ready math, K through 8. Implement all relevant features in Bright Space, and of course, school safety, and I take each one of these and give you a little bit more. Revise the current processes where needed, add new, so we've talked about example, assembly expectations. We notice the kids are getting a little loud, and maybe we need to work with them a little We noticed the kids were getting a little loud and maybe we need to work with them a little more about what the expectations are. And then we're like, yeah, well, we didn't do assemblies for two years. No wonder they forgot. And some of the kids weren't even in school. They didn't know what assembly was. And you, you forget these things. You know, they're only four. They were two when this happened. Use Swiss data to help identify students who need behavioral supports. We're, we're working on a new process that'll help us use Swiss more. That's a little more automated. And renew and improve, if not renew, improve schoolwide celebrations. And Jen's got something going on right now to get us to a schoolwide celebration. So we're getting back on the horse and you know, we'll get there. And next year will be another year in which we can lay down another layer to this. Schoolwide literacy. Spanned iReady reading pilot for K through five and consider, consider it as a district curriculum, which you'll be considering iReady tonight for math. So Patty and I talked, we'll do another year in reading. You've seen some data from, from Patty and how it's working, K five. I think we keep it at K five. That's my recommendation. And you know, where, where that's going to be a literacy program that we're considering. We'll have to look at what we're currently doing K five. And either whatever's there that can augment iReady reading can stay, but if it's in lieu of, it needs to go. I mean, we don't need the old if we're going with the new. So that's why we got to take a look at the budget when we do this. Review Title One efficacy of the push-in and schoolwide model. We should be doing that every year. I had a wonderful opportunity today to observe Rachel Driscoll in a small group she was working with. And it was, it was great. And it was great to see the gains. I'm really glad that just happened today. It happened this morning. Use the time and talents of the Title One staff to maximize benefits to students in need with their literacy. So numeracy and literacy is what you're going to see. Here's your numeracy. Math scores have improved. Patty's done a nice job at updating us. And implementation of the iReady Math K through eight for next year. Okay. Because remember, just a reminder, it's K through seven this year. Our eighth graders will graduate. So it'll be a K through eight plan for next year. Bright Space. We did very well with this and this will be the third meeting, a third school committee meeting where I perhaps say, the teachers and the staff deserve an A+ on the effort they put into this. And, and I wasn't kidding and I won't keep elaborating on it because I have the last two meetings. But just a stellar job at going through what is a highly painful process in organizing, organizational change. Okay. That got us to our first T1 report card. Mike's working to determine features of Bright Space that might work well for pre-K two, three through five and six through eight. To try to automate as much as we can now that we got through T1. Might take some time, but wherever we can save time for the staff, let's save time for staff and let's have this program work for us. So we're investing some of Mike's time into that. Meanwhile, Jen has graduated from the Bright Space University course and has learned a lot from the user side. So consider Mike, the coding side behind the computer. Jen's in front helping as the adult teacher of adults and has offered mini lessons. I'm not sure yesterday, but at least Wednesday before on how to enhance your Bright Space because a lot of features we're not using. But come on, let's just get to report cards to start with. If we can get three report cards out that are seamless and excellent, that sounds pretty good to me. But then the bells and whistles and things that make your life easier, I think it's natural for a teacher to go, oh, that'll save me time. I'll figure it out. I'll invest the time to learn it because it's worth it because later it'll save me time. And that's what I'm hoping Jen can help. But we're going to really let the teachers ask Jen and work with her about, how can I make this a little more efficient for myself and a better tool for my kids and my parents? So that's definitely a goal for Bright Space next year. And we will produce three report cards a year. And lastly, I talked a little bit about safety. We'll practice fire drills per state law. We will adopt the ALICE processes. We've just started in that. And you know, we're going to support safety upgrades. And I can't tell you exactly what all of those are now. The upgrades that we're doing to take care of the 57 wing for an intruder are simple and cheap. It's parachute cord and eye, and eyelets in the walls. It's, it's a simple mechanism to keep that door from opening. Ballistic glass is incredibly expensive. However, the sheets that you put over regular windows that turn it more into like a windshield. So you know, windshield buckles and a pane of glass breaks. That can happen and Andy's looking into it. I think we found it was 13 bucks a square foot ish. And you have to put it on and then you lose your window warranty. But hey, and that's another way of slowing down somebody because there's a lot of glass on these doors that come in and out. To replace a full door right now at about, I think we bid out what, four doors at $57,000? This is a first step in the right direction. As we move on and look at the building and we look at the world, if we need ballistic glass or different doors, we'll approach the long range planning committee and do that. But for now, we're trying to find the things we can do quickly and that aren't, aren't going to require us to go find a grant or add it to the budget right now. Like the radios, there's one for you. We can do that this year. It's not going to be in next year's budget. But it's just another step in the right direction. So those are kind of the overview for what we'll be talking about in the next six or seven meetings when we get together to develop a budget. And it's just some photos of us doing our thing at the end. All right. Are there any questions? All right. We're good?
All set? All right, seven, three. Adopt iReady Math K through eight curriculum?
Yeah. So what, I guess probably the best way to do this is somebody just make a motion to adopt the iReady Math K through eight curriculum as the curriculum for the Acton Elementary School. And that's the purview of the, of the school committee. You choose the curriculum. Patty's been working with this. It was Lori then Patty, but they both tag teamed on this when you were coaching the first go around. And you know, you said what's two and a half years? Long enough to look at something. So we're either going to move on with something different or we need to adopt it. I'll be asking the same thing of iReady reading. If it proves to be as effective, probably a year from now. Won't be any sooner than a year. Well, it won't be, it won't even be a year from now. We need to get through next year. So we'll be piloting. When we pilot, you don't have to take any action. Tonight, I'm asking you to take the action so that we don't have to pilot anymore. And then we can continue to build a budget and continue to do professional development around iReady for our math.
All right. So then I will, if anybody has any questions about that, I'll look for the motion first and if we have any questions. I'll look for a motion to adopt iReady Math K through eight curriculum.
On Patty's recommendation, I will make a motion to adopt iReady Math K through eight. I'll second that.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion? Anybody want to discuss anything on it? If it's working well, why, why not?
You can see.
Don't fix it.
You saw the, you saw the triangles. All right. All those in favor?
I have one question. We have a math teacher here. What do you think about this iReady Math?
Want the truth from me?
Well, yes.
I, I have just started the program in the last four months. My issue, and John's aware of the issue. My issue was that as someone who taught, teaches sixth, seventh and eighth grade math, why wasn't I part of the process of being part of vetting the program, so to speak? And that I've never got a clear answer on that. I, I was told last year, first of all, I didn't even know that that was even out there. I found out the very first day of the last year's school year. When they said that K through five was doing iReady. That's the first time I even heard of it. And then I had no input on any of it. And I think as a stakeholder, I should have input. And then I was told right before I left for my hip surgery last year that I was going to be doing iReady Math. I had questioned why wasn't I involved? And again, I didn't really get to experience. And then I was called in just recently and said that we're doing K through eight. It's going to become policy. And we had a discussion and went pretty well. I find the problem is for me, I'm at the back end of the whole program. And when the gaps get, there's gaps that grow. And the gaps, by the time they get to me, are very large at times. For example, in the current seventh grade at the last diagnostic test, I had three kids at grade level. I had eight, eight kids, one grade level below. I have six kids, five grade levels, um, two grade levels below. Two, three and two, four. Just getting into the program and seeing how it works, I find it very difficult to meet the needs of those students at times because some of the, some of the materials so far advanced with the, with where they are at. And part of that is, I mean, like it or not, the kids were definitely brought back by the pandemic. And that's really affected, I mean, you really have to do a lot of remedial math work. And so I have that part to me where I was a part of the, of the process. I'm still learning the program. At times I've had to go back and do a lot of remedial work just to be able to do what the program wants. I find that the program at times is way ahead for the middle school students. Again, there might be some pandemic involved, but even knowing my kids over doing this for 28 years, there's stuff that they want being done in seventh grade that I'm doing in eighth grade right now with the kids who, the kids were still struggling with that type of material. And that worries me going forward with how they're going to be able to meet the stuff. Now you're going to have times where the kids are going to be in this program more and more and more. But right now they've only been into, you know, you know, seventh grade really has only had one year previous and that wasn't the best year. So I find I'm really having to work with a lot of remedial. You know, I, I did some work on it. I mean, we're standard based in school. And I, I found this thing from Massachusetts that did, they went and they reviewed all the middle school math programs at the time. And I'm not sure, I think it was published in 2020. And the overall math, ready mathematics assessment. And I will say, it broken up to K five and six, eight. The K five met the standards of the program. The six, eight says right here that it's not meeting the standards of mathematical process in teaching.
Right. But in the sixth, seventh and eighth category, we would only use iReady Math or do we use other things like you have in the past?
I've always had to use a mix of materials to work with it.
Will this show you, like you, you talked about some of the kids are getting stuff that's too advanced for them. But as, does it give them the ability to back up and start looking at stuff?
At their level?
That they've missed so that they can build?
Yes, there's prerequisites. But if I looked at it, I'd be doing all the prerequisites most of the year.
Yeah. It's not stuff that the kids do.
Well, I've, I've been able to use my materials that I've had in the past to be able to, for example, let's talk about fractions for sixth grade. Okay. In the way that it is in, in the program. It only addresses division of fractions and division of, they've been gone from fractions for a year. You have to come back and review how to add to drive to multiply. Well, you can't do division of fractions unless you know how to multiply fractions. You know, so you have to do that backload. And so I've, instead of going back and trying to do it through, because I don't know the program as well. Because I've only had two, four, six total hours of training on it. So I've been, like I've always done with any program that I've had. I don't follow the program. You know, if I'm looking through a lesson, I'm not going to hit every piece of the lesson. I mean, you've got to differentiate to what it means. But I just find that, I mean, I'm going to, I mean, it's, 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 it is what it is. My biggest problem is I was not involved in the decision making process. And as someone who teaches three years of math, in middle school math, it's a lot different than elementary math. You're making a big transition from basic math to algebraic skills. And I had, I mean, I have a, I have a big stake in this and I had no say in this. And this goes back and I'm going to, I'm going to put that on who I believe it, it started with and that would be Lori. And Lori never actually ever, I was shocked when I came in to, at the beginning of last school year, I came in to help Matt with, Matt Breda with materials. And I was going to come in and give him the materials I had for sixth grade. And all of a sudden they said, there's a new math program and I hadn't even heard about it. And then six months later, I'm being told I have to do the math program without any input.
So iReady Math?
I've never in my life had not, in my years, 28 years at Acton Elementary, I have never had no say in what the curriculum is going to be.
Well, I thought we had to ask teachers.
A 28 year veteran, yeah, it upsets me.
But the sixth, seventh, eighth iReady Math is asking too much for the kids to know, you're saying?
It's, they're not, they don't have the, the skills at this point. I mean, what, I mean, I have three kids in seventh grade at grade level.
Will it make a difference that kids in the, like the K through five that are doing it now, when they graduate up to you, will it make a difference for those kids? When you're teaching, when you're teaching them because they've already been in the program? Will that be different versus the kids that haven't gone through it yet?
It will help, but you're always going to have students that are going to be behind.
Regardless of anything.
Whatever program.
You're always going to need to use your, use whatever skills you have to implement to supplement whatever program you're using too. Like you said, you're using, you're supplementing with things that you've used before. And I think that's what teachers always do. They supplement with, with skills that they already have, that they've used before. So, and it's, and it's a fairly new program and it hasn't made its way up yet to those.
But like I said, this one at the middle school level, it's, it's issues with classroom application, standards alignment, usability for teachers. It does need disbanded for accessibility for students because there's so many pieces to it. But in overall, it has a near mastery. And this was done by a, a group of educators down in Massachusetts. So it's the only review I've seen, comprehensive review I've seen of all the programs. But that being said, I've also, I also know that Stanford has reviewed, redone their math program that's similar to this program. It's not the same. It's the trend, trend. I won't say it's the, the right thing. I'll say it's the trend of math right now, up and down where they want discourse between the students. But I've seen, I've seen programs come and go. I mean, I've done six and seven over the, my 28 years. But it, I, it's a little bit wordy for some of the kids. Some of it is at times, I can't speak for the K through five. It seems like when I've gone back to look at the K through five, it's more accessible to the students. And like I said, I met the standards at the, at the K through five level.
Yeah. So, so I'm here as a, as just a teacher liaison, but it, I'm not a ma, I'm not a math guy. Math teacher, obviously, I'm a science teacher. But as you're talking, and I think maybe Patty can speak to it too more on the K five. It, I'm wondering, because I think an important part of this that we're, we're not talking about, but I'm sure you guys have talked about, like, is it, in the early stages of all of this, is it fun? I mean, do the kids like it? I mean, I mean, because you know, you get a lot more out of the kids in learning. If you, if it's something that interests them, engages them and all of that. I mean, what are we seeing for feedback or are we seeing any feedback yet? K, whatever. Because I never talk to the kids about anything other than science. So I really don't know. And all of this talk got me thinking about that because obviously, that's a huge part of teaching, to be honest with the engagement.
Right. So the, the program is based on real life, like for instance, word problems. All have to do with real life, real situations that help kids to understand why we're doing what we're doing. So down below, the, the slides, the slideshow that goes with each of the lessons is all set up with a word problem that they learn to figure out together. So there are three reads. You read it through, you talk about what the word problem is asking you. You read it through again. They figure out what they need to do. And yes, I can, I could get my kids on, in fourth grade, sit on the floor, make an audience. We go through the word problem and now they're itching because they really want to go back to their tables and figure it out. So there's a lot of engagement. But what happens is that engagement, if you use the slides that go with the, with the program, the problems are all right there, all laid out. The kids are familiar and they're all real life. And there is a rigmarole. It is not easy. They want. They want discourse. They want kids to talk to each other and talk about why they're doing what they're doing and how to solve a problem. And not everyone is going to solve it the same way. They help each other to figure out what the function's going to be that they're using to solve the problem. And they share strategies with each other. But there is definitely a rigor to it. And the kids, all the way up through, do not hesitate to jump into anything. The, the math phobia that some of these kids have had before this program, it was awful. I can't do math. I can't do math. I'm not good at it. I was hearing that all the time. And now they work with each other, they talk about it, and it's not scary anymore.
Do you have slides, Mark? And you use them with your lesson?
Yeah, sometimes, not all, but the slides are also in the book. So you have a book and there's slides that match the pictures in the book.
That the kids have?
Yeah. So.
Have a question?
Yeah.
And the I Ready program is, I've gotten some material on it. And I'm seeing that it's identifying three different sectors. Children that are struggling, children that are almost there, and children that get it to grade level. Talking from the teacher. The first thing that came to my mind from this perspective is a saying that we have in the lower echelon of the workforce is theoretical versus practical. Okay? Upper management makes all these decisions about what they want you to do, you know, how you're supposed to do it, or that comes out, but they're not actually doing the process. Looking at the different levels that I Ready is showing within one classroom, what is being done? Is the teacher getting any assistance in bringing the students that are below the standard? He's talking about two grade levels behind, one grade level behind. Now, I understand it sounds like a very good program because now you can focus on those kids to bring them up to that, to the grade level they're at. What help is the teacher getting? So that when he's teaching his kids that are one grade or two grades behind, that the kids that are at that level don't get bored? Or if you're trying to teach seventh grade and you're giving them all these word problems, the kids are possibly like, I don't understand what the hell they're talking about. Excuse my friend.
So let me just really quickly.
You want this?
Just.
Yeah, and there is different things that you've got to be able to do.
Discussion.
And you, you also have to realize that in any math program at all, whatever math program you have, you're going to still have kids that are behind, kids that are in the middle, and kids that are at or exceed. It doesn't matter whether it's I Ready or if it's another program. You're always going to have those kids that you have to work a little harder with, whether it's I Ready or whether it's something else. We're seeing the triangles in the I Readys, but we're not seeing the triangles in other programs, our previous programs, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So it's, it's not a matter of the program necessarily. If you find a program that works well and you pilot it and you try it for two or three years and you're seeing math skills grow, then you've got a program you need to look at if you're seeing the skills grow. And that's what we're seeing with, with the I Ready.
And I understand through the charts, I saw that.
Right.
But I guess my, my basic question was, you're at whatever grade level it is and you have the three categories. Now, I Ready has identified what students need help more than others. Okay? So then the teacher's focus would be to bring those students up to class, right? My question is, what help is the teacher getting for that grade level to assist in bringing these students up? Because if I'm focusing on these students, I'm ignoring these.
So, so they all have a pathway, which is one way that they get help. Everyone's pathway is determined by how well they do on the diagnostic. So if they are missing a skill, then they can pick that up in their pathway and it helps them to learn that skill. It doesn't mean that they're learning a skill that maybe Mark is doing in a lesson. So because the kids are all grouped by prerequisites after they take the diagnostic, every lesson that's in there will give you which kids are ready, which need just a little bit of help. And there are two other categories where there's some real remediation that needs to happen. So depending on what lesson you're in, and the younger ones, I'll say have, have shorter sessions, numbers of sessions in their lessons. So let's say your lesson for that week has session one, session two, session three. And session three is always a refined session where they're just kind of fine tuning things you small group. This is where you say to your kids, because, and this is one lesson right here. This is a sixth grade lesson. So in this lesson are all of these other math center activities for kids that are on level, below level, above level. There are enrichment activities for kids who really get it, so they're not bored and they're all right here. There are practices for kids. There are interactive tutorials. So if they're not understanding what's happening in class, assign a tutorial to them or do a tutorial as the entire class so that everybody can understand, you know, what's going on. There's fluency practice. This is a slide set for, for session two in this lesson. And it opens up into a PowerPoint. Mine takes a minute. That looks like this. So here's how they, they get started. I'm going to show mine. I don't want it. So you're projecting and you're not losing any time with any prep because here it is. There's the lesson target for this lesson. Here's how you, a starter, these I call warmups. And it creates a lot of discussion. Kids will have a lot of things to say about these. Here's a word problem. So now they're going to read the word problem together. And this, this has a prompt down below that says, how would you say this problem in your own words? So now they're rewording it so it doesn't feel hard. Then there it is again. Now we're going to talk about it a little bit more and there's a picture to go with it to start making the whole problem make sense. It's the same problem. And here they're going to look, they have a toolkit. Here are some suggested things. It's the same problem, but now we're going to talk about what might you need? And this is a sixth grade lesson. So talk about it with a partner. And these go pretty quickly. You can have a conversation really quickly with these. Here's the problem again. Now you're going to compare your strategies. Everyone's going to talk about it before you even attempt to solve it. Sometimes you can make one word problem last the entire class. I've done that. Or do it half, you know, and then some practice. Then you analyze it, you're comparing strategies still, you're, you're still not really solving the problem. You're talking about how to solve it. And there are more strategies. And all of this is done for every lesson that there is in any of these. There's rigor here. They should be having discussions, arguments if they need to defend your answer, and then a connective. So all of these parts are all part of one lesson with all the materials that can be printed for remediation. And I used to, if I had a four day lesson, so you have one lesson, four sessions, I used the fifth day to see where my kids were. And all it takes is one exit problem to figure out where your kids are. You can figure out what's going on, how they're solving things, where their struggle is. So I don't know if that answers your question, Ray, but this is what, the materials that for remediation for these kids are in, are in the lessons.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
When we started this, it was for K through five, correct?
Yes.
And then we realized there was the sixth through eighth portion.
Right.
So I, in my own personal feelings to address Mark, it feels like we started with K through five. There's a bigger group of teachers, obviously. And that's where the majority of the training and the focus was. And then it was, this is good, let's keep going. So the kids finish out here. But Mark finds out for, as far as the training part and hearing that. So I think the program has proven for the younger grades that it's doing what we want it to do. And I think it's good for the school. You know, personally, I would vote to keep it and do it, but give Mark the assistance that he needs to have it work with his kids too.
I'm in agreement with everything you said. My point was, what help can we give teachers that this is being introduced to?
Same, same thing I'm saying.
Program, from that, calling.
Drew?
Yeah.
If I may, you know, I don't like coming to meetings unless I at least speak once.
At least.
Oh, yeah. Continue.
Mike and David have proven their capable, their capabilities of working with the changes that the school has made and has been put on. Having that they have taught the children, the grandchildren, and now great grandchildren just means they're getting a lot older. But the different programs that Mike was talking about as a parent and grandparent is very frustrating when you're working with your own kids, your grandchildren, and they don't know how to do something in their home. And you sit there and you go over it with them and they say, no, this isn't how we're supposed to do it. And Mike's right, because one of my biggest complaints over the years is we have changed math programs some times. And the kids always are being taught a different way. A former teacher here came to me one, one day and said, Dennis, stop helping your granddaughter with the math. All you do is confuse her. But I'm teaching her the right way to do it, get the right answer. It doesn't matter. You're confusing her. Don't help her anymore. And he was right. He was right. And, and the other thing has been for a long time, and Mike had to deal with it, is when he gets these kids, he's supposed to teach kids, and maybe this program will make it a lot easier, but there's an expected level that he is supposed to be teaching these kids when they reach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I mean, teaching algebra in, in eighth grade or seventh grade, I mean goodness, Sanford was teaching algebra in seventh grade 50 years ago. You know what I mean? And to get students that aren't ready, that don't have a handle on their multiplication, division, and stuff like that, is very frustrating for the teachers. And I have to say with both of these, that's why I brought David into it. One thing that they have always done, ever since they've been here, is every kid that they have as students, I've never heard of any kid where they got nervous about something or not. They've always made them successful in their classes. And the kids always feel very important by these two teachers. And it's going to be a sad day when they decide to leave. They've just done a phenomenal job. And like I said, I'm talking about three generations that they've, so I know them pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
Had nothing to do with the program. But I understand this question.
All right. So are we ready to vote now? That's where we're at, right? We're ready to vote? And the motion was made by Mary on Patty's recommendation to adopt I Ready Math K eight curriculum.
Well, I would like Mr. Noel to come back in maybe six months or something and tell us how it all went. See how it's going. Because we can always look at a separate sixth through eighth plan if this doesn't work for our sixth through eighth. But right now I think we should try it, you know, because it's continuing from K through five.
It's a continuation of what they've already had. I mean, that's, it's building on the skills.
Where my concern lies, that if someone, this was, I think you said it perfectly, Amanda. It was brought in as a K five program.
Yeah.
It went well and the assumption was made that it would translate right into the sixth through eight without any input from me. That's what I, I sense to be. I mean, I'm, I'll give it a try. I think, you know, I'm having more success at the sixth grade level than I'm at at the seventh grade level, but that's because of
They didn't have.
The classes themselves?
Yeah.
They didn't have.
Okay.
Like you said, you add everything in, the COVID stuff and all, you know, the way learning changed and it's perfect storm of everything.
Well, yeah, I'd be willing to come back and
I'd like an update.
Yeah.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor? Five and O.
The opposing team was running up and down the hallway. I had to say something to them. Who are these people? I didn't even recognize them.
All right, then we'll move on to eight. Is there any old business? Any old business? Then we'll move on to number nine and I'll look for a motion to move into executive session.
Do we have to? Do we have one?
It's, it's a quickie if you want it.
Want an update? Just an update?
It's just an update and it's quick. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session per one M R S A four oh five six A Personnel Matters at six thirty.
Jen, do you have that piece to six thirty? I'll pick, okay, you go home, I'll pick it up from there.
I'll second.
Return, okay?
All those in favor?
I didn't get the second.
CJ, CJ.